Good evening, everybody. This is Monday, August 23rd, 2021. I'm going to call the Prescott regular city council meeting to order. We'll take roll call. Tom?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Marine?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Dar?
Here.
Pat?
Here.
Let's all stand and say a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody who wants to give comments, it's not discussion, but comments to the council of anything that's on the agenda right now, now would be the time to step forward, state your name or address in your comments. Anything that's on the agenda right now.
Does this have to do with our presentation?
Your presentation's coming under the other public comments right at the end. So, no public comments. We'll move on to consent agenda, the regular city council meeting of August 9th and the parks and public property of August 16th.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Motion made to second approve the consent agenda. The two items listed on it. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Part of standing committees, Public Works, is there anything we need to deal with on Public Works right now, Rob?
No.
Or Matt? Okay. Finance committee, we got to lift moratorium on impact fees. In your packet, of course, Matt sent us a letter on impact fees. Originally, we did a moratorium to stimulate some growth in the city, or at least to get some houses built. We even extended it. I think it's worked well. Things are happening where houses are being built, and I think it's time to lift the moratorium. Impact fees are normally levied to help with the city's growth, as you can see in Matt's letter. Matt, you want to give a little two cents worth on your thoughts?
Sure. So, there's really two items here with this item. First, it's the moratorium that actually ended on June 1st, 2021, per the council action. So, really, we're just asking for your approval to reinstate the collection of impact fees. And the second item is, we do have a public facilities needs assessment impact study that was actually done back in 2002 when we first started impact fees. So, the second item is really asking you for permission to go to Cedar Corporation, ask them to put together a proposal for updating that needs assessment and looking at that, maybe collecting it for other uses. For instance, if there's public parking you want to try to start using for some of the trails, maybe we're talking about with the parks, asking them to look at that and how we can potentially broaden our use of those impact fees.
Thank you, Matt. Does anyone have any questions on lifting of the moratorium? Thomas? Go ahead.
Are you talking about retroactive from today back to June 1st for all home building that has started between the time of the dropping and now?
So, there wouldn't be any ability for us to retroactively collect, but it would be starting tomorrow, basically with this approval?
And I might've said we should've been doing it since June 2021, but we haven't. Let's initiate it at this point. So, no, it's not retroactive. It starts tomorrow.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the collection of impact fees related to the residential development that were previously in the moratorium that ended on June 1st, 2021. And in addition, I would also make the motion to approve staff to work with Cedar Corporation on developing a proposal and cost estimate to update the city's public facilities needs assessment related to impact fees.
Second?
Okay. Motion made to second to approve starting to charge impact fees as of tomorrow and to have Cedar Corp. do an upgrade to our facilities needs assessment. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a resolution, 2021, basically a resolution designating signers and counter signers for the city accounts. Now that we have Matthew on board, we should have him as one of the signers. So, let's just update our resolution, says who's allowed to sign for the city unchecked for soulful.
Motion to approve, Resolution 2021.
Second?
Motion made in second to approve Resolution 2021, Resolution Designating Signers and Counter Signers City Accounts. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, looks like Bailey, you might be speaking up unless you have someone else. Parks and Public Property, approval of the concept trail design for Zones 2 and 3 of the Cooley River Trails project. Do you want to present that real quick?
Sure, I can do that. So, we had spent some money back and approved it to have us work with, I'm not going to remember his name, I believe his name is Todd or Tom. He did a lot of stuff with several of the other bike trails around this area to have him start laying out, along with Holly, who is part of the National Park Service, kind of a prelim trail idea. And we reviewed it during the Parks and Public Property meeting, which is in the meeting minutes, and we thought it was a great start to the project for us to move forward with it, and we will be getting additional detail as we move forward.
So, again, this is just a concept plan, correct?
Correct. This is just a concept plan, so Zone 2 and 3, which is going to be the school district and McGee Park only.
And that was represented by this one?
Correct, yeah.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions or thoughts? Not all in favor, motion to approve?
Motion to approve the concept trail design for Zone 2 and 3 of the Cooley River Trails project?
Second?
Motion made in second to approve the concept plan for Cooley River Trails project. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Prodo install sound system inside the building, the Great River Road Visitor Learning Center. I'll let Bailey present that, since she's a part of the committee.
Sure. I think we'll be talking about most of these that are on here. So, Freedom Park came to us and said that they would like to pay for adding a sound system to the building, and we had no issue with that on our committee and recommended that they go ahead and be approved to do so.
And that's paid for by Friends of Freedom Park, is that correct?
That is correct. Purchasing and maintaining the sound system will be their responsibility. So, I'd make the motion to approve letting them install that on their dime.
Second?
Okay. Motion made in second to approve allowing Friends of Freedom Park to put in a sound system in the Great River Road Visitor Learning Center, and they said they would maintain it. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is permission to plant short grass prairie garden, the interpretive panel at Freedom Park on the bluff between the amphitheater and the visitor center. Talk to me about that one. I don't know if that was in here, was it?
Yeah. Yeah, it was in there. We discussed it at the parks meeting, and Mike also provided input. We made sure that he was comfortable with where it was going, just to, due to erosion and whatnot, and he had no concerns for where it was going to be located. So, we also made the recommendation to allow them to plant these.
And that's over the river bluff, or up top a little bit?
It's up top a little bit.
Yep. All right. I think I know you're talking about where that ravine used to be.
Yep.
Any questions or thoughts? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make the motion.
Second?
And Freedom Park's paying for this? Our Friends of Freedom Park are paying for this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion made in second to allow Friends of Freedom Park to plant the short grass prairie along the bluff, as presented by Bailey. Any other discussion on the motion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Permission to install up to five tribute benches?
So, we've had groups that have inquired about purchasing a tribute bench for Freedom Park and honored for loved ones. Freedom Park will purchase and determine the locations of the benches. The city crew will help move and install them, and they'll be similar to the benches that we already have approval with, so.
Motion to approve the permission to install up to five tribute benches?
Second?
Motion to amend that to include items 5, 6, and 7.
So, 5 is permission to decorate Freedom Park with holiday lights. 6 is permission to install up to two sculptures at Freedom Park. 7 is permission to approach the fire department about supporting a burn of the section of Freedom Park bluff below the amphitheater. Any discussion on, okay, so I got a motion in second, I got amendment. Anyone want to second the amendment?
Second.
So, I got a motion made in second to the amendment. Robert?
So, they do need to talk to the fire department about that. And then, also, they need to get with Mike about where they're going to create an ice rink, because we don't want it to kill the grass and then have to replant, and so that hasn't been determined exactly where that's going to go yet. That's still in the.
We haven't leave it off.
You have to leave that off?
It's off for this. So, I told them not to include it, so it's not on our agenda list.
At this time?
So, because I was not on board with that at the moment until we knew more.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I got an amended in the second. So, you want all in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Right, so then the motion would include approving permission to install the five tributes, permission for decorating for the holidays, permission to install up to two sculptures, and permission to approach the fire department about the burn. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Scope for updating the outdoor comprehensive recreational plan?
I can speak to that as well, and Matt, you want to comment on it? So, basically, we have to update our comprehensive plan, our parks plan, but then also our sidewalks and bicycle trail plan, because right now, that one is for sure out of date. And with the parks plan, we updated that recently. However, with the grants that we would like to go after for the Cooley River Trail and also with the Riverfront Project, we need to incorporate that in. So, we have just a couple minor updates. So, this would just be to get Cedar Corp. to put a proposal together so we could actually see the cost. This is not to approve it.
Yeah, okay.
So, this actually does have the cost?
It does. Oh, we do have it in there.
So, this would be to do the actual work of them updating our outdoor comprehensive plan for $3,500?
Let's see that.
This would, as Bailey mentioned, this would tie our comprehensive plan to our trails. Previously, we had a bicycle and trail network plan that wasn't actually tied to our comprehensive plan, so there was no ability for us to enforce that development as development occurs. This would change that and add it to our comprehensive plan at the cost of $3,500 by Cedar Corporation.
So, that is in the packet, right?
Yeah.
All right. It was in front of the mapping of the trails.
Yeah.
So, I make a motion to approve the scope of work by Cedar Corp. from the amount of $3,500 to update the bicycle and pedestrian network plan.
Second?
Suck it up. She's fast, man.
Motion made in second to approve the, what do we say, the scope of updating professional services for the pedestrian network plan. Any other discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the next item is request for Prescott Days' use of public parks and amphitheater. Looks like, who wants to read that? I'll let somebody, Matt, you want to read that, what they're asking for?
Sure. Public property, Merckard Mill Park parking lot on Friday, September 10th, for the boat, or excuse me, for the street dance, boat launch for fishing contest on Saturday, September 11th, Broad Street for the car show, Saturday, September 11th, Public Square for children events, Saturday, September 11th. You want to do these?
I'll just do one.
Amp permits, Friday, September 10th, at Merkord Park for a street dance, Saturday, the 11th, for the car show, Saturday, the 11th, for the children's events at the Public Square, Saturday, the 11th, at the Legion, and Sunday, the 12th, at the parade. And then, street closings, Broad Street, including first parking spots on all four corners of Orange for the car show on Saturday, the 11th, Elm Street and Court Street on either side of the Public Square for the children's events on Saturday, 11th, St. Croix from Pearl to Hope Street for events for the Legion on the 11th, and the following streets for the parade on Sunday, the 12th, Canton, Cherry, Elm, and Washington Streets.
All right. That's the request of the Prescott Days committee. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the Prescott Days' request to use public property and amp permits for Prescott Days. Second?
Motion made in second to approve the Prescott Days' request for public property amp permits. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is license request for Prescott Area Chamber of Commerce for temporary alcohol permit for Prescott Days' street dance Friday, September 10th, from 6:00 to 11:30.
Motion to approve the application for a temporary class liquor license?
Second?
Motion made in second to approve the temporary Class B for the Prescott Days, September 10th. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a request from Patakij for Class A beer and Class A liquor license for 213 Broad Street. I'm not mistaken, and maybe Matt, you're going to help me with this a little bit. I think we had a limit, right, Robert?
Yes.
Five?
Correct.
Go ahead.
So, yes, we, Patakj reached out to us to let us know they would like a liquor license at 213 Broad Street. Per our liquor licenses, we only do have five. We did let Patakj know that, however, said they did still want to apply, even though, basically, just to indicate that they would like one, even though that we are recommending denial, as we do not have an additional liquor license to offer them.
All right. Any discussion, any questions from council? So, it's basically, Patakj is just wondering if there's one available, and if there's not, they're okay with that, but they wanted to apply to see if there's one.
Is this the one that we set the limit on?
Correct.
No, it is.
The city can decide how many want to put out.
One extra.
And what it is, is, you know, you've got other establishments coming to town that may want it also, so Patakj has just seen what's available. If there's none, they're okay with that.
This isn't the one that we set. It's the one that's set for population, correct?
Nope, this one we set. We set the, the population one is the, basically, the bars are Class A beer line. This is Class B. This is only for off sale. This license would be for off sale, liquor stores.
And we, what's our limit? Five?
We put five.
We have five. That's our limit for.
We did that a while back. Robert, maybe you remember more than I do, but I think the council, you know, we could give it to every gas station in town, but we just said that you only need so many liquor stores. I think back, I can't remember when it was, 60 years ago, you think?
Yeah. Something like that. You know, we talked about free enterprise, you know, and that's all finding good, but, you know, when you're going to shut one business down to make another one go, it's like, you know, saturating the business, so.
I believe we are encumbered by ordinance for five licenses like that.
Yeah. For our city code. City ordinance put that.
If we were to even want to move forward on that, we would have to bring it to the ordinance committee.
That is correct.
And amend that particular statute.
And the five liquor stores we have now are Bob &amp; Steve, BP Amoco, Churchill, Patakj Foods, Leo's Landing, and St. Croix Liquors are the five that we have at this point.
Leo's Landing is pretty much, I mean, they have their dock closed off, right?
So, it's seasonal.
Yeah. All summer, I've seen it.
But they hold it, so someone could try to get it from them if they're not using it. That would be for that person to decide. So, I guess I'd entertain a motion to deny the request.
So, moved.
Second?
Motion made in second to, basically, by ordinance, deny the request from Patakij for Class A beer and Class A liquor for 213 Broad Street, basically, per the ordinance.
I would ask that we review it at our next ordinance meeting.
I was just going to say, let's put it on our agenda for the ordinance meeting, though.
All right.
And could somebody figure out what's going on with the one that's on the river?
Yeah, it's been blocked on.
Give Leo's Landing, just see what they have to say about it. All right, so I got a motion in second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, you know, we have a situation with these licenses where they can be worth a lot of money, and I know that they can be transferred. Hypothetically, one group decides they don't want the license, they can sell it to another group. So, we're walking on some, maybe stepping on people's toes in this process. So, I'd like to examine this in the ordinance committee and move forward from there.
All right. Sounds good. Appreciate it. Anybody else have comments? Not? All in favor of the denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance committee, we need to set a meeting, it says here.
So, let's look at September, which is living on the edge, I'm sure, already, with things filling up.
Should I put something here off?
So, we would be looking at, I mean, I'm pretty much free all the time, guys, so Tuesdays are bad for me.
What else up the committee, I forget?
Me. And Tom.
Yes.
Would you want to do before the next council meeting, on the 6th?
Yeah, I can do that. Oh, no, we can't.
Labor Day.
That'd be 13th, anyway, next council meeting's 13th.
It's the 13th, yeah.
Could you do the 27th?
Can we not do it in front of 13 or something before the 13th?
Before the 13th?
Yeah.
Let me see.
That's our next, that's the next council meeting.
Oh.
Second?
I'm on the wrong month. It's my fault.
I would, I can do it on the 13th.
That would work really well.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock. I can do five. We need a full hour for this, I think, so.
Yep.
Five o'clock on the 13th, Matt, September for ordinance.
Okay.
It could go into multiple meetings.
It could.
Yep, oh, yeah. All right. Next item is planning commission, meets the first Monday of every month, and right now there's nothing to present. Call of safety, the downtown update from the chief of police. Who wants to read that, just a quick little book?
I can do that.
All right, Robert, I'll let you read that.
It says, "A summary regarding the calls for service dated 8/1 through 8/18 is attached. There has not been any significant incidences downtown involving the bars. We have had a few isolated incidents involving intoxicated people, however, they are typically just sent home. In this report, you will see one incident involving a disorderly conduct. Subject was asked to leave or denied entry by two rivers, and the officer on duty ended up having to deal with them. He was eventually cited for disorderly conduct. I will say that the downtown bars have done a great job communicating with each other. Even scabs has joined the effort. The bartender down there even called in some fake IDs this weekend, and they were contacted and cited. Things are going well downtown. I will mention that while things are going well downtown, the officers are spending an exorbitant amount of time down there. With this, the upper area and residential areas getting fewer patrols to make sure we are being seen and preventing any shenanigans from happening." That is from Eric Michael's chief of police.
All right. Thank you, Robert. That's just an update for everybody. If you have any other questions, you can always ask. Chief, my thought is, I know they're down there, but they should try to make sure they step up too, on top of it.
Well, they're trying to find balance, and it's a hard thing to find this time of year.
I think Eric knows that.
Yeah.
He's just letting us know.
Love the update.
All right, personnel, do we need anything for personnel?
We already have a meeting scheduled for September 9th at 5:00.
That's right.
That should be on your schedule as well.
All right. Let's see, what else do we have then? Now, we're going down to communications and new business, public comments. Now, anybody in the audience has anything they want to speak to the council, now's the time to state your thoughts. Now, it won't be discussion, but you're just presenting your thoughts to the council, and we can always put it on the next agenda if we so choose. So, anybody in the audience, step forward, say hi to your mom, because you'll be on TV, and then state your name and just your concerns, your comments. Anybody? Now would be the time for you to step forward if you want to state something.
I'm Darryl Alexander.
I want you to, that way they get you on TV, Darryl.
Oh, thank you.
You got to make sure your mom sees your friends and.
I hope she does. She's looking down.
Yeah, all right.
So, yeah, I'm Darryl Alexander, 310 Oak Street, for those that don't know me, and I'd just like to comment about a terrible situation we have at the city hospital, the old hospital, with the looks of it, the way it's been abandoned, the constant vandalism up there, the constant grub paraphernalia found there, in and out. Doesn't the city have an ordinance to someone to clean up a lot? Is there a fine against, for not cleaning up your lot? It seems to me that there could be enough fines built up that the city could pay for cleaning up the lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Darryl.
Anybody else have a comment they want the council to hear?
I had had a discussion earlier today that I was going to bring up that hospital, and the situation that we have issued a building permit. I believe they took out a permit, they started construction, and then pulled their equipment out of there and left. And they brought before this body, a little over a year ago, state-approved plans, and they were adopted by the council. And then, they were going to build an assisted living facility there, Phase 1 and Phase 2. We approved Phase 1, and then they pulled out for a reason that I don't know, but I was going to suggest that we begin citing that site for cleanup and so on and so forth, because it is an eyesore. And it's been that way for years, and we've listened to a lot of excuses from this group over the years, and a lot of, yeah, we're going to get to it, sort of things. So, yeah, I agree. We have to do something.
All right. I'm going to update your comment, I think, a little bit. They did not have state approval. I think we approved their concept, and the approval, the condition of their approval was to get state-approved plans. If I'm not mistaken, and I'm a building inspector, so my guess is they submitted plans to the state, and the state said, nope, you're going to have to do this, this, and this, and I, my guess is either they didn't know they had the sprinkler, or there was something that they weren't expecting, and it's costing them a lot more. And now Matt's going to give an update, because I've had Matt, I tried to call the developer once, and he didn't respond, but I got Matt, finally got ahold of him. So, go ahead, Matt.
So, I talked to the engineer today. They did submit their plans to the state. They're under review. Everything was good, except, with the exception of the mechanical, which they resubmitted back to the engineer. They made those changes, they had a conversation about a month ago, where the state was now reviewing the new mechanical that was turned in. So, that is what they're waiting for in terms of the state approval. So, once they get that approval, they'll be resubmitting it to our building inspector, Todd Dolan with St. Croix, Alcroix inspections, I should say, to approve.
And then, so you told them we'd like it cleaned up and weed-whipped and trimmed, and maybe boarded up a little tighter? If not, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. So, that was my conversation with the engineer, my conversation with the owner and Nottingham Construction, Greg Johnson. We did talk about the condition of the property. He was working on getting it re-boarded up. We did talk about some of the excess brush and the concrete, and we needed that fixed. Additionally, what we talked about is he was turning in a pro forma and we were going to have a look at that in terms of construction and what he's looking there. So, that's where we're at in terms of getting the lot fixed. And if he's not going to move forward fixing, we can move forward looking at our code and offering and putting citations on the property.
And I guess, just because I'm a code enforcement guy myself, and what Tom said, and I think the council would agree, I think we send them an email, and if our ordinance says ten days, say per our discussion, it's not when you get a chance. I would like an email to go out to them or somehow, something to them saying, "Ten days." Now, it doesn't mean they have to be done in ten days. They better show improvement. Maybe we give them a little longer, but ten days shouldn't be hard to trim some trees and board it up. It's not, okay, we'll get to it when we get to it.
I have a question.
Sure.
How long does it take to get state approval of those plans?
Way too long. No, and I'm serious. The state of Wisconsin, they do plan review, and they had a lot of people retired, they didn't hire them back, and for a while there, my job, someone was like, "Can I get started?" And I said, "No, when's your plan review?" Twelve weeks out. It's anywhere from twelve to sixteen weeks out sometimes for state approval. I don't know if they're caught up or not, or if they hired a few people. I think it's probably down around eight weeks out before you get a chance to get plan review. So, that might delay a little bit. But there again, now what I would say here, being an inspector, if they've got the building plan approval but not the HVC, they can get permission to start on the building while the HVC has been reviewed. So, you can let them know that the mayor knows that too. If they want to come and pay the fees and submit their building plans, we could get them started on that, so.
There's a lot of work to be done before they even get the profit.
They did gut quite a bit out of there, so it can't be too much left to tear out of there, I don't think.
Yeah, I know.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure. Step up to the picture, because people in the audience that are listening on TV, they want to hear your voice or see your face, something.
Well, in regard to that, I talked to the engineer that laid it out. He was also the engineer that did our wall. And he designed a gutter system to drain to the ones that drains to keep water off of us. And he said they really kicked back about that price. And what I would like is that the council put a condition of occupancy on it until that is installed. Is that possible?
Unless, and we'll talk about that, but I think, yeah, Stan, we can, council remind me of that. Maybe we have them, or maybe Matt, choose some of the fact that we want to see their stormwater runoff.
So, they should be submitting a spot plan for any of their approvals with us.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, just updated plans and tell them we're concerned about. And I'm pretty sure they plan on running a lot of their water to that, inside that parking lot. But it's been a while since I've seen the plan, so I'll have to double check. Thank you. All right, any other public comments? If not, next item on the agenda, the Peacock Ridge retaining wall discussion. I really shouldn't say discussion, it should say public comments, but maybe we'll discuss a little bit. We can't take any action, that's the only thing. We can hear the discussion on it for now. Sure. Thank you.
I'll share. We're good.
Well, good evening. My name is Charlie Evenson. I'm on the Board of Directors for the HOA Association at Peacock Ridge. I live at 332 Oak Street in Prescott. We've got a short PowerPoint presentation to discuss the problem that we had with the wall and the cause of the water erosion, or rain and the erosion that took place and what our expenses were on. As you can see on the picture here, this is the picture from Highway 10 at the wall after it had collapsed. This took place in April of 2019. We have some pictures of the collapsed wall due to the uncontrolled city storm water. The north section of the wall collapsed caused by the rain washout, once again, in April of 2019. There was inadequate storm sewers on the north side of the old hospital in the two-plus block area. You can see the view from the hospital, the view from Court Street, and then the path of the water as it flows down through the riprap, coming down into the parking lot in Peacock Ridge, and then over the wall just on the north side of Unit 334. During the rainstorm, water built up to more than 18 inches high up on the hospital grounds during a seven-inch downpour of rain over a period of three to four hours. Water rushed over the riprap from the hospital grounds as the stream crossing Oak Street and to Highway, and to Highway 10 wall. Over those three hours of water pouring along and over the wall, the wall collapsed behind Unit 334. Shortly after the storm subsided, we were in contact with Cedar Corporation, and they visited the site. And their thoughts were, or their recommendations were that the heavy rains from the area flowing down the riprap caused the water collapse, or the wall to collapse. The expenses that we've incurred just for the repair of the wall, the contractor to repair the wall was $174,000. The Highway 10 barriers was $1,600. And the wrapping of the wall right after the damage, as well as the engineering and design expenses, was $10,900 for a total of $186,694. You can see by the picture, this is the, now the finished product where the wall has been repaired and is back in full working condition. As I mentioned, we had $186,000 of expenses from the wall collapse in April of 2019 and due to the rain washout and the storm sewer failures. We have a engineering report from 2017, which was well prior to the washout, showing that the wall was in stable condition. We've also been monitoring the wall over the years to make sure that we didn't have any stability problems, and everything was holding fast at that point. The walls south of Units 324 haven't moved at all since the buildings were built. Clearly, the heavy rain snow melted in the springs going down the riprap along the end Unit 334 damaged the north end of the wall that caused the two to collapse. Peacock Ridge homeowners pay in excess of $140,000 in property taxes, approximately $5,800 to $6,000 per unit. We have 24 units in our association. We own the street, so the city is not responsible for maintaining the street or doing any expenses by the city, including the plowing or salting on Oak Street. Peacock Ridge homeowners are typically senior citizens on fixed incomes or single-parent families. Our ask is, can Prescott City waive 50% of our property taxes over the next two and a half years to help us cover some of our expenses? In addition to the Highway 10 wall collapsing in 2019, we've had at least two other incidences where portions of walls have failed due to the runoff or the improper maintenance up on the, on the old hospital grounds. In 2017, the wall right behind Units 311 began to fail, and we had to invest $12,900 to get that repaired. And then in 2018, the facade of the Oak Street wall collapsed due to rain runoff that was corroding the facade brick ties. We had tree roots running into the, in between the concrete and the facade coming from the old hospital grounds. We spent $17,100 to get that facade repaired. As was already been discussed a little bit in the comments, but our ask is also, will the city of Prescott address the hospital and nearby inadequate storm sewer preventing future rain and erosion damage? With that, I'd like to open it up for any questions or any discussions we might have.
The hospital property.
You beat me to it.
During those years.
Part of the time it's owned by Mary T., and then it's gone downhill ever since then.
Between 2017 and 2019, it was owned by Mary T.
No, no, I don't know who it was owned by.
I remember when Mary T. owned the property, but I wondered who owned it during these years.
Can we get the, can we get the tax information or whatever?
If we're going to have a discussion, we're going to have to come up to the microphone, please.
So, Matt, could you look into that to see if maybe you owned that previously?
Sure.
And then I would also like to see the, when were your buildings built?
When were the buildings built?
Yeah.
I believe they started being built in about 1990. Is that correct?
Okay.
You know, they're closer to 95, I would guess.
Was the hospital operational by then, or was it still operating?
It was functioning as daycare or something back then.
Daycare, right. When I moved to town, it was a daycare.
Do you know if there was any other information besides the letter with the visual inspection? Did they have any bullet points with it or anything where they were checking off certain things that they were seeing by sight?
From the engineer?
Correct.
Is that what you're talking about?
From 2017, 2018?
I'm sorry, I...
Just the visual inspection?
Well, it pretty much says that the wall is sound and needs to be monitored, but what more would you ask?
I guess I would like to know if there was anything that went with it, if he had a checklist or something like that when he was doing an inspection of it, besides just the letter, because, you know, the whole entity of what he was looking at, there has to be certain things that, I'm not an engineer, but I guess I'd just like to know if there was more that, details while he was looking at it as far as the visual inspection.
Hi, I'm Chris Blanchard. I'm in Unit 311 at Peacock Ridge. At the time, I think that we had, Criterium did the assessment in 2017. And our homeowner association management company may have a more detailed record for you, which would be Advanced Innovative Management out of Oakdale, Minnesota. And they may have better record, you know, a more detailed record for you.
Yeah, if they have something, we...
Anything like number two, observed factors of...
Correct.
...performance?
I'd like to see the original drawings for the entire project that would address rainwater mitigation.
Spot plan?
Yeah.
There's a spot plan.
You have one quote listed from the city's engineer, but I believe he also said something like that the drainage was not put in correctly at the, in the original plan. Is that why, Tom, you want to see the original plans?
I want to see the original plan for all the rainwater mitigation.
Yeah.
Because that riprap that you're referring to was engineered into that project. It's there for a reason.
And I, Jane mentioned to me that at one point you're going to put, they were going to put a driveway down through there, and they found it was too steep, so then they ended up riprapping it. This was another second exit into your development, but I'm not 100% sure. So, I think right now I'd like to find out, you know, where's the original plan, like you say, and just verify what was all put into that. So, I'm not saying right, wrong, or indifferent. I think what I would like to do is take your information and go back and look at the original plans, see what the city had in there, what was originally designed. You know, again, I would never say, you say the storm sewer's inadequate. Since 1995, it's fine. We had one seven-inch rain in three to four hours. That's an event that's kind of hard to plan for.
And it rained.
You couldn't build a storm sewer probably big enough, you know, and reasonably comparable now, you know. So, that's the thing I'd like to check on. How big is it? What's it designed to do? I'm not saying that, I don't agree with you, but I also would like to check the rest of the city's documentation. But this is helpful for us.
All right. I'll see if we can find those, find those original records. They're getting pretty old at this point.
And I'm not sure if the city has.
We have the drawings. I had them scanned when...
What's your name?
...all fall down. My name is Douglas Lobbs. I live at 314 Oak Street. We have the drawings digitally, and we have hard copies of them too.
Correct.
But then, if we're going to look at plans for our sewer, storm sewer mitigation, we should look at plans for your storm sewer mitigation, because that street up above is where the hospital is. It drains right into the riprap. Your, the streets, if you stand up there, it all drains right to the riprap. You know, we should see what your mitigation plan is, because your mitigation plan is to put that water onto our property.
And that's where I don't, again, I thought Jane said originally that wasn't the issue until they decided to maybe bring a driveway down, and they thought it was too steep for fire trucks, so they already had excavated and they put the riprap, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
Is that Court Street? That's Court Street.
It's Court.
But you stand there, it pitches right to the riprap.
Because of when it was excavated for a driveway potentially, and I don't know that, I want to verify that, so I can't say for sure. And I know your point. And the city of Prescott, guess what? There's many streets that don't have storm sewer. Prescott just let it run to where it ran, and it got to where it needed to. So, that's some of the issues that we're trying to address as we improve streets too. But I understand your point, and is there something we can do to help change that? Maybe we'll have to figure that out. That'll be part of this whole big picture, is try to work together and solve a problem, not argue about whose point, whose problem it is. You know what I mean?
Oh, absolutely.
Tunics down. Tunics down. We're all looking at each other's side, so.
All right.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anybody else?
This could boil down to a battle of experts.
Well, I think it's, I mean, once you look at the spot plan, we're going to be able to see kind of what the original intent was for water runoff, or when the development was first coming in. Mary T.'s was already there. I don't even know, how old is that building?
Really old. Older than me.
Yeah, so we're not going to probably have a whole lot on that in general, in terms of...
You have to go back to the elevations.
So, in terms of who owned that building at that time, back to Maureen's question, is even though it was not being utilized and maintained as a daycare or whatever it was, you still have the responsibility as a property owner to upkeep and maintain it, and that includes...
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer. So, and, so that property is not specifically owned by the city, so I think that's just something to consider. I'm not saying what to do with that information, I'm just saying that in terms of liability. And then also, the three-hour water runoff, I mean, I saw erosion on that, that wall previously, so I think, again, to go back and just do our due diligence to see what we have. So, that would just be my one thing, is just to let us look into it.
We'll do some research, and if we can get the maps, if you have the old drawings, that'd be great, helps us. And then we'll have Cedar Corp. too, maybe do a little research.
Because they were out there right away, Cedar Corp.?
Yeah, I believe they were out there right after this storm.
Okay.
So, all right. Appreciate your input, and we'll get back to you. We'll probably call you, either talk to you in a meeting or come back here. We'll definitely decide that.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you coming in. Thank you, everybody. Any other business anybody has, council-wise?
I just wanted to comment that we went out to the Biosolids meeting in Baldwin. Dave and Bailey and I and Matt, and the Biosolids plant is at its max capacity. So, they have a big plan of expanding and...
It's aged.
They're going to, they're going to do it in phases, and then they're going to give us an idea of what it's going to cost all the entities that belong to the Biosolids facility. There's 11 that belong to it, and there's 11 that contribute. And so, that's where, that's at right now. They were just giving us a presentation on what the plan is and how to make it better. So, it was very good, it was very informative. It's a very aggressive plan, but it needs to be, really needs to be addressed. So, I just want to let everybody know that, you know, that is, that is coming.
Bailey, do you have any input on that?
Yeah, I mean, I asked a lot of questions because I don't know a whole lot about poop, so, and how it gets processed. So, really asked a lot of questions based on the process that's being done. Is it really beneficial? How much square footage are we saving? Was the study done based off the population? Is there opportunities to sell? What, if we went to this new style of processing poop, if there's an opportunity to sell it to farmers because of the way it's more usable, friendly? So, I think that they presented a really good case. No matter what, they have equipment that is down right now that they have to address. Otherwise, we're going to have poop back up pretty much everywhere. So, they're running out of room, and it's just a matter of fact, and, yeah.
And what I got is it's aged. It's basically almost past its useful life. And so, they have stages, immediate, five-year, and maybe 10-year. And I know the three of us mentioned it too, and Matt was there. Do you just do it all at once? Because, you know, anytime you wait five years, what cost, I think they said somewhere between 21 and 23 million. That would be for all 11 members to split. We know that 10 years from now, it could be 33 million.
And we're still looking at what our cost would be. We don't know it now.
That's what we asked.
Because our membership fee is, you know, there's a lot of cities involved in it, so...
So, would our portion be 2 million or 4 million?
Exactly, we don't know.
We wanted to know, because we thought maybe it'd be wise just to do it right away. So, just FYI for the council.
Are they seriously looking at recyclability of the Biosolids?
Well, they do now.
They do now.
Oh, they do now.
Yeah, they process it with lime, and then it sits there for, I don't even know, 90 days?
180.
Yeah. And so, now this other process, it's also going to reduce the space.
Yeah, well, yeah, it takes more...
By 90%, they will, they will, yeah, 90% of it will be...
Take most of the moisture out.
Yep.
They can't, they can't spray it on crops that are already sprouted.
Yep.
So, their window of opportunity is in the spring...
Yep.
Before anything's planted, and the fall after everything's harvested, and before the ground freezes, because they can't spread it on frozen ground. So, if they, they go to this new process, they're going to dry it, 95% pelletize it, and then they're, they're going to be able to put it on the land at any given time.
Oh, okay.
But so, it's all usable. I mean, we could go pick it up from their facility.
They just can't sell it because they don't make enough. They said, "You've got to have a large quantity in order to bag it and sell it." So, they basically get farmers that pretty much take it for nothing and spread it on their fields just so they can get rid of it.
Free fertilizer.
Did they bring up heavy metal saturation on farmland and that sort of thing?
No, they, they talked about PFAS potentially, and how they would handle that, and so it's something that they're looking at. PFAS has to do with concentricity of what's in there, and so there are ways to test for that. I don't know what their plan is yet, but no, there was no discussion. The discussion was purely on upgrading equipment, maximizing the capacity, and making sure that we have room to grow, and we're not just building for, you know, the next five years. We're looking quite a bit further ahead.
Yeah.
And so, I think their plan is going to be a good plan for a number of different reasons. One, if you look at what they have, they're saying a 2% growth of population from now until 2038, which is not in line with what the predictions actually are looking at. They're actually looking at a decrease for a lot of population. So, I would say that there is room to grow as well in terms of where we're going. So, it's a good long-term plan.
So, FYI, you'll hear more about it when they give us numbers and so forth, so.
You guys did a good presentation, you did a really good job.
Any other business? Not budget workshop. You got to schedule it?
So, yeah, we wanted the council's opinion of how they would like to do the budget workshop this year. Obviously, there's been a couple of different ways, it sounds like.
The last two years, we've done it one night.
One night?
Each department head gets about 20 minutes, a half an hour to present their case.
All right.
We don't go line by line, because toilet paper last year, toilet paper this year. I'd say toilet paper, but paper, pens, that type of thing. It's just their major changes.
Yep.
And we usually do it all in one night, collect all the data, and then come back
Well, it was spread over like 10 years.
Yeah, I know, so you mean the Capital Projects one, or whatever?
Yeah.
Capital Fund?
Major expenses, like the police cars, the fire truck, were all on that.
Yeah, well, that'll be part of what she...
I got that, we'll update it, and we'll work on bringing that to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Did we do it on Tuesday, Wednesday?
Wednesdays.
That's what I thought, so October 6th would be the Wednesday, we could do it at the first Wednesday in October. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
I like everybody here, just because...
Are we going to start them at like, we started them early.
Can we all, can we start at 5:00, or do you want to start earlier? We got like six departments.
Just depends on who can get here.
What time are we doing it at?
4:00 or 5:00, what works for everybody? Maureen, I know you have a tough schedule.
Is that the 6th?
Yeah, you're retired.
We usually did it like 4:30, I think, last year.
You want to start at 4:30, is that all right? Bailey and...
Fine with me.
I can make it work.
October 4th at 4:30, and it's like, I think it's, check with Beth, I thought we gave each department had like 20 minutes of shot.